Call the Board of Alderman Meeting to order for the City of Warrenton for September 3, 2013. At this time, I'd like everyone to stand and face a flag. We'll say the flag is lead. The flag is lead.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
First item on the agenda, or item three, is a proclamation and recognition of Ashley Barer. This is one of the fun things I get to do as mayor. Everything's not fun, but I am proud to be able to do this for you. So if you would come forward, and I think you and I were standing near the podium, and I'll read you my proclamation. First, I want to introduce you to the board before I do that. This is Alderman Ock.
Nice to meet you.
Alderman Kesslerly. Alderman Cornell.
Nice to meet you.
Alderman Flake.
Congratulations.
And Alderman Dryer.
Congratulations.
I think we'll do it over here, Ashley.
Where I'm not in the background, please.
So we don't block all of the...
All right.
One of the things I wasn't sure about, but I think this is the first time Warren County's had a Missouri State Fair Queen. Ashley is a 2013 Missouri State Fair Queen, and we're proud to say she's from Warrenton and Warren County. Actually, you don't live in Warrenton, but you live outside. So I'm going to read this to you real quick. Whereas Ashley Leanne Barer is the 19-year-old daughter of Todd and Suzanne Barer of Warrenton, Missouri. And whereas Ashley Leanne Barer has been crowned 2013 Missouri State Fair Queen and was named 2012 Warren County Fair Queen. And whereas Ashley Leanne Barer is a 2012 graduate of Warrenton High School and is currently a sophomore attending William Woods University in Fulton, Missouri, and plans on a double major in equine general studies and concentration in equine assistance therapies and business administration. Whereas Leanne Barer is a member of the Alpha Phi Sorority, President's 20, Western Club, the First Judging Team, supervisor for Fumethon University Ambassador for William Woods University, and still a member of the Warrenton FFA chapter. And now therefore it being resolved that Mayor Jerry Dyer and the Board of Alderman, on behalf of the residents of the City of Warrenton, Missouri, do hereby congratulate Ashley Barer for having been crowned Missouri State Fair Queen 2013 and wish her continued success in all her endeavors.
I'm glad Jerry had to say equine.
Would you like to say anything to the public or anything to the property?
Well, as he mentioned, I was a 2013 Missouri State Fair Queen. I competed with 63 other girls from across Missouri. There was an interview portion, a feature talent competition, and an evening gown competition. That was over two days, Thursday and Friday, August 8th and 9th. And I went up there and I said, "You know, this is going to be fun. We'll kind of try, you know, see how we do," and represent Warren County, obviously. And just went up there and had a blast, met a ton of nice new people, and ended up coming out as queen. And I was kind of surprised, but you know, it was probably the best 10, 12 days of my summer, and wouldn't trade it for a thing. I got to meet all kinds of new people, met a ton of the entertainers that were up there, like Toby Keith and Gary Allen and all kinds of people. Got to ride on a huge six-horse draft wagon, which was, I'm a horse girl, so that was awesome. And just so many connections. Got to spend a lot of time with the state fair commissioners. They're all great people, director of agriculture and conditions like that. And it was a very fun, filled, and packed couple of weeks, but definitely didn't know someone was going to end that way. So that's really a good thing. So thank you all for this.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Just kind of curious, what do you get to do as a fair queen? Do you have a schedule or anything for state?
Well, they have every contact information of mine, so email, phone, and I'm getting emails and phone, or phone calls, text messages saying, "Do you want to hear?" Mainly events all throughout Missouri, so parades, festivals, celebrations. I got an email about Children's Mirror from that, working with them at U. So pretty much anywhere they want someone who has a title or they need Missouri State Fair or Missouri Ambassador there.
We got a 5K coming up, don't we?
I'm going to finish that. Okay, real good, Sam.
Thank you, Leanne. Thank you for coming. Todd and Suzanne, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Very proud of her.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We won't make you stay the rest of the night.
No, you're welcome. We would understand if you didn't.
Well, your mom did, Ed.
I'm going to feed her and ship her back.
Certainly welcome.
Bye. We'll be in touch.
I want to move on to item number four, approval of minutes. Approval of the regular board meeting minutes on August 20, 2013.
I make a motion that we approve the board minutes from Tuesday, August 20, 2013.
Second.
Who was that second? Motion made by Alderman Kesslerly, second by Alderman Flake to approve the regular board meeting minutes Tuesday, August 20, 2013. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark is absent.
Motion carried five zero with one absent. Item 4B, open and executive session minutes of August 20, 2013 regarding litigation and auditor work product.
I'll make a motion to approve the open and executive session minutes from Tuesday, August 20.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, second by Alderman Kesslerly to approve the open and executive session minutes of August 20, 2013 regarding litigation and auditor work product. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one absent. I'm ready to move on to item five, hearing from the public. Each meeting, we give anyone in the public an opportunity to address the board. Ask that you keep your remarks to five minutes or less than civil as possible. So at this time, if anyone would like to address the board, would you please come forward to the podium, give us your name and the nature of your business. Nobody wants to talk to us. That means we're either doing something right or not doing anything at all. So we're going to move on. We extend that same courtesy to the Board of Alderman, and if any board member would like to address the public, we ask that you do so at this time.
Nobody else has?
Alderman Ock?
No.
Alderman Kesslerly?
No.
Alderman Cornell?
Certainly. One of the things that I have had the opportunity to discuss with most of the local business people, as well as some local citizens, is the cities stand on purchasing local. I've also had some preliminary discussions with Ms. Thorne. And the question comes up, at what point we have in the recent past voted to use a local vendor even though that was not necessarily the lowest bid? And that always brings up the discussion, I think we all, or I hope we all see the value in shopping local, at what point is too much of a difference, exactly that too much? Ms. Thorne has told me that some discussions with the auditor indicate that we can certainly choose a local source even though they're higher, but they would prefer that we have some kind of policy or guidelines in place to dictate those decisions or guide those decisions. So I would like for Ms. Thorne to start gathering, either through contact with other municipalities, their policies, their procedures, and try and devise in fairly short order a procedure for how we should consider bids and what kind of consideration we can give to local bids that aren't necessarily the lowest dollar-wise, but overall benefit the city. That's it.
I think it's something worth looking into. I would be in favor of that also. Maybe a work session or even put it on as an agenda.
Sure.
Alderman Flake, any comments to the public?
No.
Alderman Dryer? My comments are real brief. My first comment is really to the Board of Alderman. Melody and I are both going to miss the next meeting. We're attending the Missouri Municipal League Conference in Branson, so we won't be here. Wanted to see what the board wanted to do. We can keep the meeting as scheduled. Alderman Cornell can run the meeting. Mr. Clark will be back. Alderman Clark will be back by that time. Or we can change it to another date and move it later in the week or something. So what's your preference?
I prefer to keep it on the date because my travel schedule is already booked opposite that I've reserved these nights.
Alderman Ock, you have a preference?
I'm looking at my calendar. I'll be with you in a second.
Checking on it?
Yeah.
I would prefer to keep it on the same night if nothing else for the continuity to the public. They tell that it's Tuesday.
Alderman Flake?
I'd like to keep it on the same day.
Keep it on the same night.
Any issue on your calendar?
No, it's fine.
Okay, that's fine. We'll leave it as is and leave it all in your hands, and Melanie and I will figure out what's best for the City of Warrenton. So, thank you. Other item I mentioned to the public, we're expecting to hear from the state auditors. We thought we would have heard by now, expecting any day. And I know I told you that last meeting, we were expecting any day, but so far, they haven't released anything to us. So as soon as they release it to us, it gets released to the public, and we'll see what they've got to say. Only other issue I had, just a reminder to the board members, that we're on the agenda at Boonslick planning tomorrow for their tax meeting. I think the meeting's at 11 o'clock, and we've been given five minutes to approach that committee. So anybody that's available that would be able to attend, please do so. And that's all I have. So with that out of the way, we're going to go on and go to item eight, discussion of new route for homecoming parade. Who's addressing that?
Well, I don't see Mr. Spoonster, and I don't see Mr. Perrong. And Mr. Perrong is who I spoke to on the phone, so I don't know if you want to table it. I don't know if they're running late with the game or something, because I never did hear from them. But they both said that they were going to be here.
We could skip over this and come back to it.
Okay.
So make sure you remind me. Don't let me close out the meeting without doing that. So this is a school issue with their homecoming parade.
Yes, they've totally changed the route this year compared to what it was before.
Okay, no problem. Let's go to item nine, if I can get my machine to open up. Item nine is a letter of support for the City of Truesdale to regain their own zip code. Is there anybody here going to address that, or is the mayor's letter sufficient? That basically they're asking, they've lost their zip code. I think there's been some issues and problems with it before. I think they might have lost some tax money along the way somehow. Somehow, one of the state tax things kind of sent the money to Warrenton because we're all using one zip code. Does anybody remember anything about that? Or at least Truesdale thinks that happened. So I can understand why they would want their own zip code. Any comments from the board on it?
I don't know why we wouldn't issue a support letter on this.
Pardon me?
I don't know why we wouldn't want to issue a support letter on this.
I would agree.
Okay. And we're all in agreement that we'll issue a support letter and authorize me to sign it?
Yes.
Anybody want to make a motion on that?
I guess they've lost their zip code when they closed the post office down there. Is that what happened?
I'm not sure. It seems like they held on to it for a while, and then I really think their issue is, you know, not so much with Warrenton, it's with the US Postal System. They need to get clearance there. But I would entertain a motion, authorize us to send a letter of support for them.
I'll so move.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Kesslerly, second by Alderman Dryer to approve the mayor signing a letter of support for the City of Truesdale to regain their own zip code. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, likewise. Motion carried five zero with one absent. Item number 10, Mercy's Hope 5K walk run at Vinkley Park on October 19, Valerie Hayes. Is Valerie here? Valerie, if you want to come forward to the podium and tell us what's going on.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come and speak tonight. My name is Valerie Hayes, and I am the founder and president of Mercy's Hope, which is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization that's been around since 2007. We work in Kenya, Africa. We have a children's home over there that we help to support. And we do a yearly 5K walk and trivia night. And this year, I decided, because I've lived in Warrenton for about eight years, I also own the Village Bookstore in town, which is actually a for-profit business that helps to support Mercy's Hope. And I just decided I love this town. We've been here about eight years, and I really wanted to bring our financial support base out to the Warrenton area rather than the city where we were before. So our board decided that it would be a good idea to have a 5K walk here. And I had talked with, I believe it was Dottie, about what it would take to do that, and she said, "We don't normally do those in the park, so it's kind of a new thing." And so I was just coming to present and, I guess, grant permission and see if there's anything else that I need to do to be prepared for that. Last year, we had about 25 people at our walk. It's not a big walk. I'm hoping maybe to have 50. That would be really great. We're not planning on closing anything down. It'll be in the park. Yeah.
And what is the time?
We're going to have registration at 8:30 in the morning, and then the walk will begin at 9:00. It's not a competitive walk run. It's just a family fun walk run.
And the entire thing's within the park?
Yes.
You're not closing any streets or anything like that?
Nope, we'll probably be done by 10:30, 11 o'clock.
Okay. You need any board members to participate?
You're all welcome.
They're all available.
That would be great. My only concern is if you have enough room, because there's really, that sidewalk's not very, very wide. What we've done in the past is we've used the park as part of it, but the actual run has come up and down through Main Street. So I don't, I'm just, if you think you're only going to have 50 people...
Yeah. And it really wasn't a problem last year. We didn't have any runners at all. They were all walkers, lots of kids, you know, baby soldiers, things like that. So it's really, it's not advertised as competitive. It's really more family oriented.
My kind of walk.
And it's not, there's not going to be like a go time. It's going to be kind of a, you can walk once, you can sit down, you can walk again. It's real casual.
I am a proponent of any kind of use we can get out of our parks.
It's a very nice park.
Vinkley Woods is a very nice park. So I'd make a motion to approve the use of Vinkley Park on...
October 19?
October 19 for Mercy's Hope 5K.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, second by Alderman Kesslerly to approve Mercy's Hope 5K walk run at Vinkley Park on October 19. Any discussion or any other concerns from anyone? Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one absent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Item 11, request to hold an event on October 12 at Dyer Park Past Park Hours. Mr. Cornell, do you want to come forward and address the board?
Since this is an event that is partially my event, I'm going to step out of the room while you all have this discussion.
You know, I'm not sure. You guys have handled yourself well. You've had the beautiful, you've had the attractive, now you've got the ugly. You're really a broad appeal group.
Go home.
What I'm requesting is the use of Dyer Park for 10/12 of this year for an entertainment event that would be a tailgate event for the Mizzou, Georgia game. It would be an invitation event, but it would be open to anybody that came by. We wouldn't refuse anybody that came by. There's going to be food and drink. There will be a screen, an inflatable screen, on which will be projected the game. And it's an entertainment, meet and greet type event. We are somewhat, we want to give plenty of advance notice, you know, to our request, but at the same time, we're not exactly sure when the game's going to be broadcast, because the Mizzou doesn't let that out until about two or three weeks before the game. It may be an afternoon game, may be an evening game. If it's going to be an evening game, I can see where it can present some concerns, because it probably would go till 11 o'clock, depending on, you know, how late the game went. Could go to 11 o'clock or later. We don't anticipate that there's going to be any issues, but we just, we would want to rent the pavilion and the bandstand in Dyer Park for this event.
There's no charge?
No charge. No, it's a free event.
Free event?
Free event.
By invite type thing?
It'll be by invitation, but it'll also be open. It's not going to be advertised, but it will not be, if somebody walks in, you know, they're certainly not going to be treated.
Is that a home game for the Mizzou?
I don't know. Is that a game?
It's a away game.
Is it a away game? Thank you.
So suspect it'll probably be in the afternoon.
Probably.
Because even if it starts at 6:00 East Coast time...
Shouldn't be an issue, but we want, you know, we want you to know that it could involve some concerns. I don't anticipate that they're going to want to, you know, beer license or anything like that, but if that's decided, we'll come back, and that'll be a whole new discussion.
People would bring their own refreshments?
No, we would provide food and drink.
But at this point, they're not anticipating liquor?
No, no.
So we don't need that.
And I might ask Mr. Greville, is there any noise issues on this that we need to be concerned with?
I don't know what noise issues, you know, you could have. I would have to look at the ordinance on it. I didn't really anticipate that. I mean, it'd probably be something like any other event that if it got too loud, I mean, you guys did a concert in the parks. What time do those typically go to? Do you get noise complaints for those?
No, but they're early.
They're about 9:00.
Most of the homes along that stretch are pretty well across the road, and there's not that many. It's not heavy to pop them in the area.
You know, if I lived in one of those houses, I can see where it could be an issue, you know, if they're loud and rowdy.
So if they're winning, it's loud and rowdy. If they're losing, it's kind of...
Yeah, it's kind of a good bait situation, yeah.
So do we need to make a motion to allow this event and have extended hours to 11 o'clock?
Yeah. I don't know.
Well, you're on.
I mean, you set parameters, yeah.
The only, I don't think there's any issue about having the event. Issue is, they might go beyond closing the park.
Right.
What is closing the park? Dusk or...
Dusk.
Well, it's not dusk, because the concerts are always still 9:00 or 10:00.
10:00.
10:00.
Okay, so we'd be asking a special consideration for that.
So I'll make a motion that we allow this event at Dyer Park on October the 2nd and extend the time to 11 o'clock for the event in case the game runs late.
Motion by Alderman Kesslerly, second by Alderman Ock to approve the request to hold an event on October 12 at Dyer Park Past Park Hours, not later than 11 o'clock. Is that...
Yeah.
You know, and I think what we do is when you get a little closer to the game...
If we get a little closer, and then we have to ask for something different, by then it's time to come back and ask for something different, and then you need to be able to have that ability, you know, that option to say yes or no at that time. But right now, that's the way it looks.
And you personally are the sponsor of the event, right?
Yes.
Any other discussion or concerns? Ask for roll call vote, please.
Alder Person Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell is abstaining.
Motion carried forward zero with one absence and one abstaining.
Thank you for your consideration. I appreciate it.
Certainly welcome. We'll let Alderman Cornell come back in.
Or why don't we just let his dad sit here and let John go home?
I'm going to support that.
Okay.
Let him go home.
He's working, taking it all back.
He might have had a home, yeah.
Okay. Let me get my... I don't hear the, I'm going to give item 12 one.
No. Wasn't it in an email she sent us the information on?
That's all right. I don't know that I need it. Item 12 on the agenda is Greater Warren County Economic Development Council increasing agreement for audit. Terry might correct me if I'm wrong on this. Our agreement with the Economic Development Council actually was due in June, if I'm not mistaken. Is that when we normally, or is that when we gave them their service agreement money last year?
It ended, the period ended June 30 for our previous payment. As I remember it, it was more than a year. It was like 15 months or something. But it ended June 30 of this year.
So it's due now? Am I correct?
Yes.
And that's why it's on the agenda? The issue with them is, and I think all the board members probably understand, we require accounting procedures for when we give $10,000 or more to an organization, and so we've been giving them $10,000. I'm open for discussions on how we want to handle this.
So are they asking for 11? Is that correct, is it your email?
No, they're not asking for 11. The issue is, the accounting procedure that we need done is going to cost them somewhere between $1,000 and $2,000. And so that's, we were trying to figure out a way to offset the cost that they're paying for the accounting procedure.
When this, when we first joined the EDC, and this was discussed, and I believe a work session, and I had some concerns at that time regarding the level of audit, not that I, I believe that we are correct, and we're doing what the auditor requires us to do in requiring this audit, and we should stay consistent with that. Additionally, I think that there needs to be consideration for paying for that audit. I have heard somewhere in the neighborhood of $1,500 to $2,000 that this audit is going to cost to have done. My concern is not necessarily the cost that the EDC is incurring, because every organization bears that cost if they ask for and receive over $10,000. My problem is, out of fairness to the other members paying and contributing members of the EDC, the other municipalities, the school districts, all of them are asked to contribute at a certain level. No other entity is requiring these audits. Whether or not they should, they are not. So while Wright City, Truesdale, the school districts are giving these funding levels all to go towards this common goal... all to go towards this common goal, we are giving our money, but only a portion of it goes to that common goal. The rest of it is to pay for these auditing procedures. I believe that it is fair to the other paying contributing members to at least pay for half of this audit so that we are carrying our weight towards that common goal. And I believe half is fair because even though these other entities are not requiring it, I do believe that they are going to see benefit from it. They will have access to this audit through the EDC and they will be able to show their auditors that this has been taken care of. So, short story long, I believe that it is fair for us to increase our contributions by $1,000 to help offset the cost of this audit.
How big of the operating budget does the council have?
Michelle, do you know off the top of your head?
Off the top of my head, I do not. I'm sorry, I didn't bring that up.
I think that it's about $150,000. I'm also a little amazed that the other taxing entities, the county and the school districts and the other cities that, I'm perplexed on why none of them are requiring these same accounting procedures. I think at some point in time, especially if they're audited by the state, I think they might change their issue on that in due required. At that time, if that happens, I think that then we need to lessen our contribution and let them share and pick up their part of the ballgame there.
I think part of that is other municipalities aren't subjected to the state auditor's office. We were through a petition. And the county, I would venture to say, hasn't been fully audited since we joined the EDC last year, since it was formed. So maybe that's an upcoming issue for the county on the state audit. And I don't believe that the school districts are audited by the state auditor's office.
John, my initial thoughts on this are not to go with the increase. And my thinking is this, is we, you know, we have other organizations that come in and fund at such a high level that do very good charitable work, you know, Gopi, the Women's Shelter and those organizations. And to me, if we were to give somebody $1,000, you know, I could make an argument that it would be better use for resource because those organizations are helping, you know, in some functions, what the police department is doing. And I'm just not, you know, initially, I mean, I could, you could change my mind, but initially I'm just kind of inclined to say, well, if we're going to give half the audit back, then we give half the audit back to some of these other worthy causes too.
Well, and I think one of the differences here is this is not a charitable organization. I look at it more of an investment, an investment in our region and county and community. I'm wanting a return on our investment at some point, which I think obviously we are getting somewhat returned.
Yeah, well, I mean, I look at these other organizations' investments in the community too. They don't have the same goal, but they certainly have investment.
And Gary, I can see where you're coming from. And again, this is not necessarily wanting to give the EDC an additional $1,000. This is my concern that we as a city, in this instance, aren't necessarily pulling our fair weight compared to the other. I think it's fair to do fair contribution to offset the cost because Wright City, again, is providing funding without any caveats or any requirements that are going to take away any of that funding. But I certainly understand your logic on it also.
Alderman Cassely, you have a comment?
Yeah, I do, of course. We're speaking about this process and nobody's here from the EDC to even talk to us about it. And I haven't seen a formal report from the EDC. I mean, we're buying salt later. We know what we're getting. You know, I know I've talked to you, you've told me all kinds of things of what's going on and what's happened, but I would also, you know, like to hear from them a timeline as to what has been going on, you know, the things that we say are going to happen here in the near future. Were they really involved with that or was that already in the process before we even became part of the EDC? Because I've also heard that some of this stuff has been in the works for some time. So I don't like the idea of just giving money without having a report back that says this is how we've, you know, we have benefited from it. I don't have a problem with the economic council. I just think that maybe having some support documents saying this is because when our constituents say, why are you giving $10,000, I'd like to be able to say this is what we've benefited from it. So in regards to the audit, I don't disagree with paying part of that audit. John and I are kind of on the same boat here. I do understand Gary's point as well. But I kind of think maybe hold back that $1,000 and put a stipulation in that we need this audit done within a certain time period and then here's your check for $1,000. Because what I'm afraid of is we say, okay, we're going to increase to $1,000. We need a commitment to then this audit's going to be done in this timeframe because we've already been giving them money now for some time. So do we put some stipulation in there that says, we'll give you $1,000, but you don't have till next June to complete the audit?
No, I would think, and I agree with that, I think within 30 days or, and Terry might be able to shed some light on this. They really, I mean, we, we're not going to tell them who to use as an auditor or who to do it. They need to contract with a firm, a CPA firm to do it, and they have that opportunity. They can use the auditors that are doing the city audit at the present time, but I think that's up to them. I think we can certainly put a time limit on how quick we want that done.
Yeah, I just don't like the idea of saying, here's some money, now get us an audit and then we don't have anything, you know, for a year's time. You know, I just think we need a little more put into the wording versus just saying.
Just don't give them the money until they do their audit. So when you get the audit done, here's your $1,000.
Can I quote one of your points for a second? And that is information they supply us, you know. I guess, Michelle, you know, you put information in each of your reports when you attend the meeting. Do you feel like you're getting, giving us an adequate description of what goes on? Or do you think the council needs to be expanded some?
I had asked Josh Beck to give, because I have to watch what I give, using so much as confidential, that if he could actually give something, because as an EDC board member, we get a packet and if he would kind of take that packet and condense it to what he feels would be good for you guys. So he is working, has said he's working to do something like that, so it would come directly from him instead of me, and then I could add my notes to that as well. But that way, you know, I could be holding something back that he feels you guys could have, but I would hate to give you something and then get in trouble for giving something confidential away. So I do have that request into him and hopefully we'll be able to get something that would maybe make me feel a little better about what you're getting from them.
Do you feel the Certainty Company and the Hackney Company are all direct results of their recruitment of the Greater Warren County Economic Development?
I know that the Hackney Company was actually looking prior to the Greater Warren County EDC. They had actually been looking for a little bit, but I know that they worked with Josh and Josh was able to find them a building that was bankrupt and I believe at the time that they had been here previously, that building was not available.
What about Certainty?
Certainty is from Josh.
Okay. And are you aware of the code quality that Josh is working on bringing another company to Warrenton? Are you familiar with that?
Yes.
Okay. And that's, and I know it's confidential until they decide to release it, but so, and that would be attributed to the Greater Warren County Economic Development?
Yes.
Yeah. I just think we need something formally in writing that says, this is what's been brought in. This is the benefit, whether it's jobs, revenue, sale, whatever it is. I just think we need some documentation so when the constituents ask, we have some factual stuff to give them because it really hasn't been that formalized of information for people who are not directly involved. That's all. I just.
Okay, I understand.
I'm not against the whole process. I just think we need to document it for ourselves, for our constituents, so they know, so we can say this is what we're getting for our $10,000 and our $1,000 for the audit.
These other organizations come to us and ask for funding, is part of their application requirement, they submit an audit?
Yes.
And they submit it when they come in and ask for funds?
They do before they receive additional funding, so.
So if you wanted to vote for it, you could contingentally say, well, we'll fund it subject to receipt of, if they wanted to do the same thing. So you'd be treating the same, both, all organizations the same, if that's what it meant.
Alderman Flake, have you got any concerns on this?
Well, I wouldn't have a problem giving them the extra $1,000 for the audit, and I'd like to have proof that the audit has been completed and that we get some form of communication back or a financial statement or something to show us just what their situation is and how they're spending the money.
I think that's fair, and I don't think they would have any issue with that. I might tell you, and you all, I think I'd sent out some emails one time, but Terry and Gabrielle and I met with the treasurer, trying to figure out, you know, make sure they knew what we needed and so forth. They write, I think they told us 30 checks a year. I mean, it's not a, it's not a big deal that a lot of money's changing hands, going back and forth. And they've offered to, we'll come down and we'll bring our books and we'll lay them on the table and we'll bring our canceled checks and our bank statements. So, yeah, they're, they want to work with us. I don't think they're trying to hide anything. The trouble is, these organizations that might be writing 30 checks now, but they grow. And I'm sure they want to grow and get bigger and it might get more complicated down the road. But I think that's certainly a request that we could make to them that if we give them the money, it will be given and their annual agreement payment will be upon the completion of their audit, something to that effect. Alderman Dryer, do you have any comments? Are you fine with that?
Yeah, I guess everything I was thinking about is all.
Okay. I'm good. I'm good.
So what are you asking for, an action upon the board?
Yeah, I'm asking for a motion from the board that we agree to do that and what stipulations you want to put on it. Go clear.
Nobody wants to try to put that in a motion.
I can do a double negative motion.
John, you got it?
I'll make a motion that we renew membership with the Greater Warren County Economic Development Council, increasing our membership by $1,000 contingent upon a positive review of the past year's performance and an audit to the.
We're really trying to avoid using that word audit.
That's one bit.
It really isn't an audit. It's defined in the agreement. I think you could refer in the motion to the stipulation in the agreement we signed with Greater Economic Development Council for what's to be reviewed, because I don't think they have any issue with that because that was agreed upon when we did the original contract.
You're right.
So I think if you could just refer to the procedures set forth in the original agreement with Greater Economic Development, it probably.
But so there's a double standard here, right? So the other nonprofits have to have formal audits and they go out and probably pay CPA firm significantly more, but on this one, in the contractual agreement, it's less than audit, it's simply an agreed to review between the two bodies.
Same as the other organizations. We don't ask for an audit for.
Do we ask for that?
No, we ask for accounting.
We received an audit from Agopi.
Do we request the audit though?
That has been going on for many years and we do receive it now. How that started or whether it was a request of the city?
What would you do if you didn't get the audit? Would you ask for it?
We would not make the payment. I don't think we could make the next year's payment until we received some kind of audit.
But if they came back to you and said, you know, the only reason we're doing this audit is for the city and we can save, I don't know if their audit fees are four or five thousand, but we could save money by not having an audit, would you negotiate something different with them?
That would be up to the board.
I think we would do the same thing we require from the Economic Development Council, an accounting, request for accounting procedures.
Interesting.
And I don't know about Agopi. I mean, you probably know more about it than I do, that is, other cities, you know, and other committees requiring that of them?
I don't know the answer to that.
I don't know that either.
So the financial requirements in the agreement with the Economic Development Council does not state that we need a CPA audit? It just states that we need financial statements?
Says it must be performed by a certificated.
Okay. Read upon procedures performed by a CPA.
Okay, so they are getting a financial review by CPA.
And it's not just any CPA, Alderman Ock, he's an accounting expert. It has to have a CPA that has the certification to do these accounting procedures. You know the term of that?
Well, I mean, typically you'd ask the CPA to do an audit, which they offer an opinion as to the statements. Short of that, they can engage with a CPA firm to do something that's a review that's less than giving an opinion as on the statements, or they can enter an agreement for certain procedures to review that. So it's just a case of what they're engaging the CPA to do and what level of service they want.
Is there such a thing as a peer review?
Well, a peer review is when CPA firms review each other to see how well on the job they're doing. So that's not it. So I guess you could, I mean, if you want to say in accounting terms, unless they're standard, you could say, well, we're going to ask you to present to us a review, which is a certain procedure, less than an audit, cheaper, or you could just say, certain procedures we want you to look at, and you could agree to that. I mean, whatever the city wants to do.
When we met with their audit person, Mary Radiman, she wasn't certified to do that type of reviews. And she had referred us, or referred them to another organization that had those certifications.
Right, and not all CPAs do audits.
You know, I'm wondering with this topic, and I do, this is not going around whatsoever, I'm wondering if we need to get the copy of that agreement to, so that we make sure that with the motion we make tonight fits what that agreement says.
Give me the, you have an agreement?
Do you have it there? Okay, good. Thank you.
I mean, I think you could probably refer to the ordinance in the exhibit, Exhibit A, and take a look at it and see.
I was going to say, because we don't have it.
Yeah, and this is what we're asking, wanting to know that they got proper internal controls in place, that they're doing their bank reconciliation on a monthly basis, they got receipts for all expenditures, disbursements, you know, checks are pre-numbered, checks used, checks are signed by more than one person, accounts receivable, dues are billed timely.
So we're not actually getting a financial balance sheet from them?
It's not what that says.
I think they would be happy to, they have no qualms about showing us their financial statement on a monthly basis. I'm not sure I've got the time to want to look at that on a monthly basis, especially when they're writing 30 checks a year. I could look at that pretty.
Well, they should be able to give us a year in from the last year.
Buy the checks and want to see that.
So you could certainly say you want this, you want their annual financial statement for the period ending June 30, and whatever else you want to incorporate into your request.
You guys let me know when you want me to try and correct my.
I think you need to add to that, to add the annual statements, year ending June 30th. But I also wanted to discuss in here before you went further.
Hold on, hold on before you go much further. Part of what we're discussing though is the audit that they have to provide us now for the funds previously expended, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, it's something ongoing to spend. Yes, condition, the new funding is conditional on receipt.
Understand. I'm not going to add anything to, any kind of conditions to this agreement that was already agreed to, maybe in the future, but I'm not going to add anything, I don't think we can require them to bring forward anything beyond what.
We agree.
It's a form of an ordinance anyway, so you can't.
So we need to include that on the next, we need to revise the ordinance.
Well, I think realistically speaking, if you could, I mean, there's new consideration, just like any contract, that's a contract. There's new. There's new consideration, additional $1,000, so what the board said, for example, you wanted to see their end-of-year financial statements, I think if you change the dynamics of the audit as spelled out in there, you know, they may not be interested in renewing it, but I, I think you're, you know, asking for a year-end financial, or their monthly financial or whatnot, you know, you are giving them a new $1,000, that is new consideration that would give you the grounds, the legal ability to ask for that, and it doesn't sound like Mayor Day would probably have much of an issue, at least having that looked at by the city, if that is something that you guys would want to consider.
Ending June.
I don't know if we're going to do a new agreement, or if we're going to revise...
Revise the existing one?
Yeah, I don't know, I have not had any contact with Josh, but Josh was really, we got that done in two hours. It was very easy to work with, to come up with that document, so...
So...
He was very open to whatever language we wanted to propose, and what language they wanted, so I don't, I would just be surprised if that was a real issue, if you added year-end financial statements or something like that, because I'm sure they have to produce it for their audit, want to see one.
Do you want to restate that?
I think I can restate it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to renew our agreement with the Warren County Economic Development Council, increasing our funding by $1,000 with the, with the additional stipulations that they, in addition to all of the safeguards in Exhibit A of Ordinance 2033, they additionally provide year-ending financial statements for year-ending June...
30th.
30th, 2013.
Second.
I'm going to see if Melody's got that down.
Yeah, I knew you were going to do that.
Because I came right out of it far. Motion on the floor by Alderman Cornell, second by Alderman Kessler, and the city clerk's going to read that back to us, to the best of her ability.
So, renew agreement with the Greater Warren County Economic Development Council, increasing funding by $1,000 with the additional, or in addition, I don't have the ordinance number, Exhibit A.
Exhibit A of Ordinance Number 2033.
2033?
Correct.
To also include year-ending financial statements, or status of the June 30th, 2013.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm going to vote against the ordinance, and I'm going to spend the vote. I support the council, I, the, the ordinance, the motion was for, to clear them out, I would agree to it, I just find it uncomfortable, as an Alderman, increasing contributions to organizations, first of all, aren't even here and requesting it. You know, I, to me, this is kind of a little pattern that I've seen, you know, the counselor says, "Well, I'd like something, we get from 17,000, this organization doesn't ask for anything formally, and we give them our money." I just, the real problem isn't the lack of officials doing that, so I'm going to vote against it, but I do support the activities of the council, the economic council.
Any other, other concerns? The only thing I would, because concerned whether you need to include, or we need to include in our motion about a timeframe on payment can't be made until, you know what I'm saying, until their, their accounting...
I don't think we have an agreement until they...
Okay.
We wouldn't distribute another payment until the condition...
No, we don't really need to address that.
But I also would like to address that this additional $1,000 is a one-time deal for this year?
What's, it's only one time, agreed.
Okay, okay.
Year-long, year-long, every year, and it might, their, their accounting procedures might be less next year, because of simplifying things, they've got all the records and so forth, so... Any other discussion on that, Ian?
No.
Ask for a roll call vote?
Alderman Ok?
No.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Kessler?
Yes.
Motion carried, four to one, with one absent.
I'm ready to move on to Item 13, Mr. Gevers. Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
And it says you're going to enter, enter, Item A, the introduction of some new employees.
I'd like to introduce you to Michelle Orff, Public Works Leader/Reader.
You're wondering why she was sitting here, we're waiting for her to come up in the public.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Welcome, Michelle.
Does she get to introduce her daughter to us?
Yeah, she came with me today.
And Michelle started on the 26th, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Nobody's ran you off yet?
I'm sorry?
Nobody's ran you away yet, you haven't...
Not yet.
The question is, no.
I think they might run away from me.
Okay, well, welcome aboard.
Nice to meet you.
Glad to have you. Okay, and then you have Scott Huffmeyer, Mayor Boyer, I'd like to introduce you to Scott Huffmeyer, he's the equipment operator, and he starts on the 9th.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard, Scott.
Glad to have you.
They waited till the streets were done, huh?
Glad to have you, Scott, very much.
It's, it's nice to have somebody coming in with, we had the opportunity to review some of your qualifications and your experiences, it's going to be nice to have somebody that walks in the door with some experience.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 13C, salt bid. Now, Michelle and Scott can stay around if you guys...
Well, I'm sure the daughter has to get on.
Hey, your dad's leaving, he didn't give permission.
Should we reconsider the Cornell unit? He doesn't have good hands, doesn't drive.
Nope, selective, selective.
All right, 13C, Mr. Gevers. Next time I have is the salt bid, and I want to purchase 200 tons, I mean, 100 tons of salt, I budgeted for 300 tons, well, I didn't budget it, I set the price at 300 tons, in case we have a bad winter, the price is held for 300 tons. The Morton Salt came in a low bid.
So, Guy, are you, you want 300, or you don't?
No, I, I want to purchase 100 tons.
Oh, at the 5709?
Yes, correct.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we purchase the salt from Morton Salt, Inc., for 2013-14 usage, 100 tons for $5,709.
Uh, I'm sorry, one question. Does this include hauling?
Yes, it does.
You're sure?
Positive.
All right. And it's, and we just, they just stockpile it?
Yes, correct.
Or it comes in bags? I don't know what...
It comes by dump truck.
By dump truck, okay.
And we stockpile it, too, we got two bays down there, we stockpile it in.
Second?
I was going to say, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Alderman Kessler made the motion, Alderman Flake seconded, to accept the low bid from, is that Morton, Morton Salt Company, Inc., in the amount of 100 ton for $5,709. Is that about your motion?
$5,709.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call, please. There's no other discussion? We're good.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Kessler?
Yes.
Alderman Ok?
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero, with one absent.
Before you go on to the next one, you might find it interesting, I received, I think, Friday, one of the hottest days of the year, my first request for timely snow removal this winter, and I wrote back an email saying, "This has got to be a record." So they're watching you, and before we even order supplies.
Okay, Mr. Gevers, I'm, I'm ready for a sender bid.
Sender bid. We received one bid, I want to purchase 126 tons, and it come out to $1,549.80, and that bid came from Bobby Holzer Trucking.
Nobody else bid, huh?
No, and we put it in the paper, faxed to 10 companies, posted on the website, and in newspaper, only one bidder.
And you think 126 is enough?
Hopefully it's too much.
I was going to say, that's pretty much what you put on my roof.
That's pretty, pretty much what we used last year, just kind of replacing what you normally carry when going in winter.
And you, you feel like that is a competitive bid? I, I mean, it's the only one, but that is a reasonable...
That's what it was last year, the price difference might be a little bit different, but it was no big jump.
Okay.
And it includes hauling?
That includes hauling.
I'd take care of John's thunder. I'll make a motion that we accept the sender bid from Bobby Holzer Trucking in Warrenton, Missouri, for 2013-14 usage, for 126 tons, for $1,549.80.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Kessler, seconded by Alderman Ok, to accept the only bid from Holzer Trucking for the 2013-14 usage, 126 ton, in the amount of $1,549.80. If there's no other discussion, ask for a roll call bid.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Kessler?
Yes.
Alderman Ok?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero, with one absent.
Approval of Steinhegen Veterans Memorial Parkway to New House Project, what's that about, Guy?
That's a water line that we want to, we need to install on Veterans Memorial, that was part of our water improvement that we had from Cochran Engineering, and it's been approved by DNR to do this, and we're replacing a four-inch main with an eight-inch main.
And that's on the south side of Veterans Memorial?
That's correct. Behind the car wash.
That's, so it's on the nor, on the north side of Veterans.
Correct.
Wait a minute.
Behind the car wash?
Behind the car wash.
Oh, behind the cars, okay. Okay, so it's not, okay, I got you. I had the line drawn wrong. Okay, I'm making a motion to approve the estimate for $10,286.75. Second.
Motion by Alderman Ok, seconded by Alderman Cornell, to approve the, what do we call that, just a water, water line bid for Steinhegen Veterans Memorial Parkway to New Ha, New House Road, in the amount of $10,286.75.
It's really a bid for parts, but the city crew is doing the work.
That's correct, yeah, I just, I just need approval to go ahead and do the project.
And order the parts.
Right.
Okay.
No.
No, just, just to do the project, the project's coming out.
No, this one's a project, this is 13.
This is a project.
This is a project, this is...
Parts are matched.
Yes.
Okay. I want to... Have I it right?
Yeah.
For the project, mhm.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Kessler?
Yes.
Alderman Ok?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero, with one absent. How about Item 13F?
That's, this is the, this is the parts list, and I'm going to accept the low bid from HD Waterworks, of $6,597.75, that includes delivery.
They were all pretty close, too.
HD Waterworks, is that?
Mhm.
Make a mo...
Hang on a minute, HD?
HD, yeah.
To the top? Oh, okay, all right.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of parts from HD Waterworks, in the amount of $6,597.75, the low bid.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Kessler, to approve the Steinhegen Waterline Replacement Project, parts only, from, what is it, HD Waterworks, in the amount of, get my machine, five, $6,597.75. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kessler?
Yes.
Alderman Ok?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Is it, is that it, Guy, that all the, the water mains, or we still have more projects before the end of the year?
We have more projects.
We still have more, huh?
We never run out of projects.
Well, I know, but he's been putting in these water lines, I was wondering if we're about...
Motion carried, five zero, with one absent.
Never done.
Deal digging.
Next time I have is the rock bid.
Does this include hauling?
They just say, "Does this include rocks?" It's just a haul, no. Well, this kind of goes back to John's question earlier, last meeting, John Clark talked about when we don't get qualified bids, and one comes in, how do you know that, should you rebid it, or should you just look at it and go, "Well, this looks competitive," or "It was close to last year," and that's what you do? Same type of issue we had a week, two weeks ago on this, so I guess the question, then, is, is the Holzer price, which was the only qualified bid, does that price look like it's competitive in the marketplace, or is it close to last year's?
It's, it's close to last year's. And it says in the paper, you know, the city of Warrenton accepting sealed bids for annual rock purchased to be delivered to various locations in the city of Warrenton, and that was, that's what ran in the paper.
Okay.
So, so those other two bids, that, that was just the price of the rock, and we pick it up? Okay. I mean, it looks, it looks like the bids are just totally out of whack.
Yeah, big difference.
Yeah, that, that, that does make a big difference, so...
Because the other two don't include...
Do they trucking in there?
I'm just kind of curious, why do we, I mean, do we not pick up our own rock because it's too expensive, we don't have the trucks? I just don't care.
Apparently years ago, there was a quarry close by.
Right.
And I think they hauled the rock from there, and now it's such a distance, and only, only hauling eight tons, and then running the trucks down the highway.
Okay.
You have to make three trips.
Yes, I can lose eight ton in one hole.
Yeah, right. Okay.
And the liability.
Yeah, and fuel.
All right, I'm making a motion to approve the Bobby Holzer bid for rock, for $41,796.50. Second.
Motion by Alderman Ok, seconded by Alderman Cornell, to approve the rock bid from Bobby Holzer Trucking, in the amount of $41,796.50. Roll call, please.
Alderman Ok?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Kessler?
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero, with one absent. Anything else, or go ahead? Okay.
Thank you.
Item 14, Terry Thorne, Director of Operations Finance Officer.
My first item for you this evening is a request for approval of the accounts payable. The total is $248,496.33.
We need to pay the bills.
I'll make a motion, we pay the bills for $2,000, $248,496.33. Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dreyer, to pay the, pay the accounts payable bills, in the amount of $248,496.33. If there's no discussion, roll call.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Kessler?
Yes.
Alderman Ok?
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero, one absent.
Get those poo poo bags on there.
Tourism recommendations, or you got anything else on the bills, Terry?
No, sir.
No, sir. The Tourism Commission met on August twenty-seventh, and reviewed the four requests that were submitted. Two of those were from Warrenton Oil Company, one for Fast Lane, one for Holiday and Express, for six hundred dollars each, to reimburse them for the attraction signs out on the interstate. The Commission recommended approval of six hundred dollars for each of those requests. There's also two requests from the city of Warrenton, one for one thousand sixty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents, which was the reimbursement of the cost for the citywide yard sale, and the other was the city of Warrenton for anticipated costs of Auto Fest, which is budgeted at seven thousand four hundred dollars, and the Commission recommended approval up to that amount. If you remember what we do with all of these type of requests, they approve typically the up to the budget amount, and then once the event is completed, there's a reconciliation, in which that, what is actually reimbursed is whatever the actual cost was. So, the total of those is nine thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents. There was also a request from the Missouri Best Rally, for advertising for the upcoming event out at the fairgrounds. This was not a line item budgeted event, but the Tourism Commission recommends taking two thousand dollars to fund advertising for that event, from their event advertising line item that contains fourteen thousand dollars in this year's budget. If you remember, last meeting, you approved a change in the tourism policy for advertising for this type of event, this is a multi-day event for the Missouri Best Rally, so they're recommending two thousand dollars for that event for advertising.
For the rest of the board, can you explain the, the approved amount of six hundred dollars as opposed to the three thousand dollars requested by Warrenton Oil Company?
Three thousand dollars is what their actual cost for that is, but we have, in the tourism budget, they have allocated six hundred dollars per entity for those signs, so six hundred dollars is their maximum reimbursement for that.
So what is the total amount that, that they're recommending?
Eleven thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents.
Making a motion to approve the Tourism Commission recommendations in the amount of eleven thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents.
Second? Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Flake, to approve the tourism request in the amount of eleven thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman person Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one absent.
And then last, but certainly not least, just an invitation, both to all of you, mayor and board, as well as any public, Walter Holsher is retiring, actually, this Friday, I believe this is his last day, after thirty-five years at the city. We're having a little reception for him next Wednesday, September eleventh, from three to five P.M. here in the chamber, so anyone who could join us and congratulate Walter on his retirement is certainly welcome to do so.
He's our most longevity with the city?
Yes.
Of all of our employees.
Yes.
Is he willing to do it this time?
Yes.
Did Walter agree to the little reception?
He did, I think at first he had expressed some lack of desire to have that, but Brady did talk to him and encouraged him, and he did agree to come and do that, so he will be here.
I, I think it's important, and I, I think all of us that are available will try to be here.
That'd be great.
Good.
And that's all I have.
Okay, we're going on to item fifteen, Michelle Slinter with the Economic Development Council.
Good evening, I have for you tonight my economic development update and greater Warren County EDC update.
Any questions for Michelle? Is, is one of the things that you continue, or continue to run into, Michelle, are companies looking for existing structures?
They're still looking for existing structures, if they're done and able to find them, they'll come back, but even at that, they're wanting the land very, very cheap. We had one that wanted a, a large building, when they couldn't find it, they wanted, you'll see them saying, you know, land-cheap incentives, or land-free even, but right now, still looking for the buildings that are out there. They are starting to fill up, so hopefully, we'll start to see some looking for more just land.
What was the TRIM grant?
Tree Resource Grant, we get that from the Missouri Department of Conservation, and we have used that to cut down dangerous trees in our parks and cemetery, and also to do a tree inventory, and we had applied for it three years in a row, two years we got it, to do an inventory at the cemetery, Bicklen Woods Park, Morgan Park, Corey Park, and we submitted this year to remove some hazardous trees, but unfortunately, we did not get that one.
It's a bonus, we have some pretty big trees, there's one out in the cemetery that's gonna be a problem.
Mm-hmm.
So we denied the TRIM grant and the.
Scrap tire, yes, I think, with the scrap tire grant, they were using a lot of that to replace schools like in Joplin, and to replace communities that had been hit by tornadoes, so that funding was going more to those communities.
But they don't have trees anymore, so you think we can get the trees.
What are your, what are your thoughts on the, the denial on the TRIM grant?
I think that was just because we had gotten it two years in a row, trying to spread the funding around a little bit. We will apply again next year and see what happens.
Okay. I read in here somewhere, and I'm trying to find it, that somebody was looking, decided they didn't want to come in because the property was too close to the school.
Yes.
What is that about?
That was a lead from Josh Beck, he had called, saying he had someone who interested in some land, I told him we had the idea of property, which was across the street from the school, however, due to what they were looking to utilize the property for, they did not want to purchase property that was that close to them on military school. That's one of the problems we're having, is that they don't want to bring a lot of trucks in and out with the kids there, buses coming in and out, and parents coming in and out.
Kind of understand that. Any other questions for Michelle? Anything else, Michelle? We're gonna move on, then. Dottie Phillips, Recreation Director.
Good evening, I should have my August monthly report. Pretty much just winding down on some summer activities and starting up on fall stuff. Couple of reminders of upcoming events, the Auto Fest is September the fourteenth, and Kelly Mueller Circus October fourteenth, and then this weekend on Saturday, we have a pretty big day with a forty-team tournament, and soccer games, and pass and kick, so it's gonna be a busy weekend.
Is swimming postseason over?
Yes.
Monday was the last day?
Yes.
Don't smile. Did you see how she helped you to smile all day?
It was great, the numbers on the soccer ended up being really good.
Yes, I was pretty pleased with the soccer.
How, how was pool and tennis this year, do you feel for that yet, or?
I believe that it was down, and I think it's all weather-related, and talking to NPM, that number is down for everybody, because we had so much rain in the beginning, and then cool weather.
Cooler.
So, I'm waiting on, I would imagine sometime next week, I will get all of our reports from the management company, that shows how many times we closed early, and are closed for the day, because of weather-related incidents or otherwise, and so next, I would, would hope that next month I'd be able to have a full report on the pool.
Did we do, we did concessions this year, right, or this is our first year?
This is our first year.
And how did that turn out, do we know?
Again, slow, because I think we were slow in general, but I anticipate also having a full report on the pool operate part concessions.
The farmer's market continues to hold its own?
Yes, I am not sure what our numbers were this weekend, I haven't had a chance to talk to Shelley, who's been supervising that, so I don't know about this weekend, but, you know, our, we had, a couple of weeks ago, a really big weekend with fourteen vendors, that's the most we've ever had there at one time, at, at least this year.
Mm-hmm.
But then last week, we were back down to eight, so, you know, it's.
They were probably about that this weekend, when I stopped by, probably eight to ten.
That's what I was thinking.
So, you know, it's, it's been, the last three weeks have been better, but, in general, I think that it's.
It might be a situation where we might want to run a shorter season, because we were, early this year, we were dead, there was nobody there.
Guess nothing's growing yet.
Well, that's true, and that was.
It's starting to have a farmer's market, and they don't have any food.
The farmer's market is scheduled to continue through the end of September, and then through the end of September, or, or, once, once that passes, then I'll put together a report and do an evaluation?
Good.
From the vendors, and try to get some more information.
Okay, sounds good. Anything else, Dottie?
No, that's it.
Any questions for Dottie? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on. Jack, you're up.
Evening, Mayor and Board, I have before you is a request to extend the sixty-day requirement for recording of the plat to three hundred and fifty-six days, and the plat is the villages at Warrior Ridge.
What's the logic behind this request, or the?
Per code, a plat should be recorded within sixty days, this one was not, it was recorded three hundred and fifty-six days past, so I wanted to try to make sure it's a legal plat, the, just recently got purchased, and I discovered this when I was going through verifying a letter of credit for the Espros for it, is how I discovered it.
So, so the developer previously failed to come in and register the plat?
In the proper amount of time, yes, sir.
The proper amount, but the city had approved?
Once the mayor signs a plat, they've got sixty days to record it, and this did not get recorded within that sixty days, so the new purchaser just wants to make sure to get this cleaned up, if you guys will give approval to allow in this case, to give him the three hundred and fifty-six days to make sure it's a legal plat.
And Mayor and Board, and part of the thing, we had this large rush of subdivision development, and part of this is, we brought some of these things to you guys, that there's no way possible to fix it, but to get it approved, and we make sure that every procedural, you know, safeguard is kind of, and I was thinking of Walnut Hollow, we had something we did with that.
Same thing with plat one, a few months ago.
Plat one was not recorded, because, you know, a lot of these things happened years and years ago, and I think this one was back in.
Oh-five.
Oh-five, and that was when we had a rush of subdivisions, and so as these things come up, we're trying to get them approved, so they comply with the ordinance, as they, as we're, we're making everything moving forward comply, but we haven't had a subdivision in a long time of, you know, residential nature like this, but even the older ones is, they're changing ads, whether it's letters of credit, or whatnot, bringing them up to whatever our current specs are, and trying to bring them into compliance, so that's kind of what you're seeing here on this, I mean, it's unusual request, but this will bring them to compliance with the ordinance, so they can get it recorded, and it has the boards, it has the approval.
Making a motion to approve the request for extension?